Okay, welcome to our council meeting today of Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. The time now is 1:08. We've had some technical difficulties with our internet. So this is just a recording that will be uploaded later. So I'll say hello to our staff. Hello to our council. Good afternoon to everyone and to good afternoon to whoever may be watching the upload version. But this time I'll call the order and it is 1:09 now. So and I'll ask council for a moment of silent reflection so we may reflect upon our duties of today, please. Okay, thank you. I'll ask council if there's any declaration of any pecuniary interest at this time or a time of subject. Seeing no hands, approval of the agenda for today, which is May 11th, 2021, motion by Deputy Mayor Burt and Counselor Archer, all in favor, please. And that's carried. I'm looking for a motion. Council meeting minutes of April 27th, 2021, that they be approved as presented. Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor War, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Any business arising from those minutes? Seeing no hands, then thank you. Onto the consent agenda then. We have before you C1, C2, and R1. I'm looking for a motion then to approve as presented. Deputy Mayor Burt, Counselor Archer, is there any discussion on any of these topics? Seeing none, all in favor then? And that's carried. Thank you. Okay, there's no delegations today. Our staff and committee reports. So R2 then would be Jeff Walden, our manager of Public Works and Environmental Services. And this is regarding our Peterborough County City Supply and Delivery of Fuel Tender Award.
Great, thanks, Mayor Aaron Council. Since 2013, the township has been involved with the core of the collaborative purchasing group for bulk diesel fuel. It's through Sun, it was currently, it's currently through Suncor and it's delivered by Upper Canada Fuels as the broker. So again, I was trying to renew the tender, so March 11th. Tenders were opened again with the city and the county involved. And W O Stinson was the successful bidder of the six. So W O Stinson, they have their own trucks as well. So you won't see the two different parties like it currently is with Suncor and Upper Canada Fuels. W O Stinson will be the supplier and the deliverer. Quite a really neat tender, like fuel prices down to the thousands of cent. So close. I mean, there's not much you can do with fuel prices. So like I said in the tender, it comes down to the delivery prices is where the savings was. Went through the math. We typically use on average about 60,000 litres of diesel fuel a year. And so I based it on historical leaders and with the new pricing, there was only four or $500 savings, which could be the difference of two fill-ups with one of the tandem. So pretty much staying status quo. Just some new trucks, some new delivery and a little bit cheaper pricing for delivery. It's a nice tender. It's five years with the option of five years again. Not a lot of, not a lot of fluctuation in the, in the fuel prices. There's not much you can do about it anyways to seek better savings. So just looking for council support to participate in the group purchasing again.
Okay, thanks, Counsel. Looking for a motion then to receive an award, basically. Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Archer, all in favor? And that's carried. And Jeff, I just want to say thank you for all what you've done for us in our township on behalf of council. You've been an integral part of our team and we are very much going to miss you. And we want to congratulate you on, on your decision to move on and we hope everything works out for you in the future, sir.
Thanks very much. And through you, Mayor and Counsel, I appreciate all the support over the years. And we've done some great things and you guys are going to continue to do some great things.
Yeah, say no more. You're going to make me cry.
I'm getting there myself.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Jeff. And so Counsel, this was the last time we get to see Jeff on our Zoom meeting, unless we end up somehow joining into North Korth, I guess you're going to, Jeff. So anyways, congratulations and carry on with your good work and your good work ethic. We appreciate that.
Thanks very much.
All right, sir. Bye for now.
Bye, Jeff.
Bye, Jeff. See ya.
Okay, R3 then. Kyle Becock, manager of water wastewater operations. And this is regarding our risk assessment and management review for the drinking water quality management standard. Kyle, the floor is yours, sir.
All right. Good afternoon. Yeah, my internet's so not running anymore right now. So for this one, we're just looking for a motion for, to accept this as information. This is our annual management review and risk assessment for the Norwood and Trenton drinking water systems. So as part of our DWQMS, we're mandated to do this every year. So me and Candace sat down on April 12th and we went over all these elements that you'll see here in the management review. And we do a quick look at the risk assessment for our 12-month review on that. You can see any changes that we've done to the risk assessment in the revisions section of that. You'll see any additions there. And as you can see on the management review document, everything we discussed there. And it's also summarized in the table at the end. I won't go through all those documents as we would be here for quite some time. So if there's any questions regarding any of the management review portion or the risk assessment, I'd be happy to answer those right now.
Counsel, any questions on this report? Oh, there's one. Deputy Mayor Burt, please.
Good. Thank you. And through you, Mayor. Thank you, Kyle. Another huge water report that we seem to get quite often, but I think we're all getting used to the, the language a little bit more now. I just had a question. It was mentioned a couple of times through the report. And I guess I just wasn't aware of the, the process, but the, the filling and mixing in the tower, you'd mentioned there was some stratification and, and getting more mixing and varying the tower levels. Can you just explain that a little bit? Because I hadn't seen that before. If I did, I hadn't paid attention. So I was just wondering a little bit more about that process.
Yeah. So essentially in our current tower, there is a separate inlet and outlet pipe. However, they're, they're quite close together. There was no mixing provision when this tower was built, put in. Sometimes what they'll do is they'll actually have the pipe where you're filling. They'll extend that quite a ways up the tower with different baffles on it so that you're, you're filling and you're kind of mixing that way. These come in and out right at the floor about three feet apart from each other. So what happens is because we have groundwater and it's quite cold. In the warm months, that water in the standpipe, because you have to create so much water to create pressure, you, you get a bunch of water that warms up. Well, cold water is dense, so it sinks. So your coldest water is always staying at the bottom of that standpipe. It's just like in a lake where the warmest water is on top. Well, when that warm pocket of water sits there all summer and you're just cycling through that bottom few meters of water, that portion of the standpipe, it'll start to lose some chlorination.
Okay.
Stuff like that. So then what we have to watch for is in the fall, but just as what happens in lakes with changeover, you'll get the same thing happen. So all of a sudden, when that, all that water becomes the same temperature, it'll homogenize. And you'll get into some, you can have some issues with coordination. So that's where we were trying to get into varying the speeds and the levels at which we, which we fill the standpipe. Now, we did have a project on the table that was supposed to be slated for this year, which was actually to take the standpipe down. And I was going to add a mechanical mixer in it. So essentially it's just like a big, slow-moving hell, like a fan blade at the bottom. And what it does is it promotes mixing throughout your standpipe. So you don't have to worry about it. That project was, was quite extensive and expensive. And with the potential of a new standpipe being built very shortly, we thought it was better to put our eggs in that basket, so to speak. And at that point in time, we would be able to take the standpipe down and do what we need to do, having a redundant tank, so to speak. Right now, currently, there is no way to take that standpipe offline without creating a whole different pressurized system. Because that's what provides the pressure and storage. And then you get into issues with fire flow protection. And so it was quite an elaborate project. So with the fact that there's potentially new storage on the horizon, we thought we'd postpone it just for now.
Okay, thank you so much. That was a great answer.
Yeah, great question. And I was quite pleased to hear that you could turn the water into, and homogenized, which would be milk in my world, but I'd be hoping that you could mix the water into wine. And then everybody in the township would be very happy in this COVID time. So that's what I was thinking.
There. Oh, yeah. J.C. did it. So why can't we?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, seeing no hands, then I'm looking for a motion then to receive for information, please. Counselor War, seconded by Counselor Walsh, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Okay, next.
Thanks all.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Kyle.
Oh, I just said, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, sir. Okay, next. We are for Edward Murphy Building Official Planning Coordinator. And this is regarding a consent file B31-21 Crowley. Ed, the floor is yours and you're on mute right now, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, this application for consent was submitted by LLF Lawyers on behalf of John and Cynthia Crowley. The consent application is for 1627 Aspedale Eighth Line, Concession Eight, Part Lot Eight, in the township of Aspedale Norwood. The purpose of the application is to convey a parcel of land having frontage of approximately 439 feet and an area of about 4.38 acres. The effect of the application will be to create a new residential lot that's surplus to the farming operations. So farming consolidation definition in the provincial policy statement is the acquisition of additional farm parcels to be operated as one farm operation. This appears to comply with the farm consolidation definition in the provincial policy statement and the official plan. And according to our official plan, the farm-related consents, they may be granted for residential lots surplus to farming operations. If the consult, if the consent is actually surplus to the farming operation, the retained portion is to be zoned to prohibit residential dwellings. The existing dwelling is surplus to the needs of the farm. The residence is not required by the farm. The severed lands do not include more lands than needed. The lot containing surplus residents will have a required minimum lot frontage and lot area. And complies with the minimum distance separation requirements and the existing building, the dwelling is habitable. And so it appears that all these are met in this definition. So we reviewed the county and the township official plan sections, applicable sections for this. The Township Zoning Bylaw and the provincial policy statement, the minimum distance separation document, the notice of the application and the application itself, preliminary severance review report that was provided by the County of Peterborough, the peer review of environmental impact study memo, the requested letter, and the DM Wills environmental impact study memo. And so having reviewed all those, we're of the opinion that the severed lands with the proposed rural residential use, it already exists. So the consent application, it should not create any land use conflicts. And it is compatible with the adjacent uses. It's been there forever. So we don't see it adding any more. Should be no adverse impacts to this severance. The, the lands are a suitable size and no new development is also proposed. So there shouldn't be any greater traffic hazards. There's lots of services. There's currently fire protection, school facilities, the police protection and hydro utilities, et cetera. Everything is pretty standard and straightforward. In order to protect the farmland, as per the official plan and the provincial policy statement, will require that the retained lands will be rezoned to agricultural one. And this will prohibit residential uses on that existing farmland. And the severed lands, since they are 4.38 acres, and they have farm buildings on the, that portion as well, they don't comply with the Township Zoning Bylaw for rural residential or for the agricultural zone. So we'll have it rezoned to rural residential with an exception zone to permit a hobby farm. Because it's 4.38 acres and it has barns and drive sheds, et cetera, on site. So it just makes perfect sense and it's a perfect little mini hobby farm, 4.38 acres. I'm hoping to see more of these in the future. So staff agree with the provincial or the preliminary severance review report that it appears to conform with the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe Policies, that the provincial policy statement on the county official plan policies, township official plan policies, these will all be in compliance as soon as the zoning amendment is completed for the severed part and the retained parts. So you, this is a fairly thick report. You've got the notice of the application. You've got the consent application itself, the preliminary severance review and the peer review environmental impact study memo letter, and then the environmental study itself and the municipal appraisal form. There was one page that was attached to this application from Autonoby South Montigan. The Peterborough County attached it by air. So I should have caught that in the report, but I didn't. And it's still in your agenda. You just omit that one page or just disregard it. And so when I, when I go to the environmental impact study memo from DM Wills, the part six or section six conclusion is that the long-term adverse impacts are not anticipated. So there's a very tiny little seasonal runoff stream that runs through the property, through a part of this property. And because that stream was there, they had to do this 14-page environmental impact study. And it's great to see that there are no long-term effects or even there isn't even any short-term effects. There's no, everything is existing and there's no development proposed. And so we made sure that the boundaries of the severance, it's a little bit of a oddball rear lot line to keep that 120-meter buffer from that tiny little stream. And so the very final page sums everything up with the municipal appraisal form. And so we will request that they rezone the severed parcel to the satisfaction of the municipality and rezone the retained parcel to the satisfaction of the municipality. Currently, the, both zones are agricultural. And so we'll rezone the severed parcel to rural residential exception to permit a hobby farm. We'll rezone the retained parcel from agricultural to agricultural one to prohibit any residential use. Everything will be in compliance with, with all the plans and policies in our zoning after that. And that'll be that. So I'm looking for the motion if possible, or if you have any questions, I would take that too.
Thank you, Ed. Question, Counselor War, please.
Yes, through you, Mayor. Ed, I just have a question about the environmental impact study. With the severed parcel, would a new owner also have to get an environmental impact study? Or would that one be used, or is that just set now that they don't have to have another one? If somebody came and bought that parcel as a hobby farm, would they have to do another environmental impact study?
They, they only would have to do an environmental impact study if they were trying to create a severance. And then that's what triggered this impact study. So the only reason it was, was because that heritage feature of that tiny stream was within the, first of all, they had a rectangle-shaped property that they were proposing. And that encroached into the 120-meter boundary. And so then that triggered this study. So they went ahead and started the study. And then they came back and reshaped the lot line just to stay out of that, to make sure that there could be no possible side effects to any of the wildlife or the, the little stream or anything itself. So this will not be required to be done again unless there was a severance or some planning act application was brought forward for some reason. But this is a good report to have. And if there was something proposed right away, they would probably be able to use the same report since it's current.
Okay, that's great. Thanks very much.
Deputy Mayor Burt, please.
Yes, thank you through the mayor and thank you, Ed, for a fulsome report. Yeah, I'm in agreement. Glad to see the, the severance a little bit larger than some previous ones we've had. Good to see the 4.38 acres. I had a question kind of along the same thing that Counselor War had. But it doesn't really have much to do with the severance, but I just wondered if you had some information on this. So because it's a, it's a high-constrained area and you have the buffers there and there's no further development allowed, what happens with the landowner? Because it's prime agricultural land, if they want to remove, say, some of the, the woodlot or some of the trees or anything near that stream? So I didn't know, do those constraints still go with, with the farming end of it? Or is it just more of a development end with those constraints? I'm just kind of curious and more from a standpoint, I know on our property, we have provincially significant wetland and we can't do anything. So I just didn't know where this stood from as far as that goes.
Generally, with agricultural property, agricultural is boss. And they, you pretty much get to do what you want. If you want to clear off some trees and, and open up a new field and do stuff like that and put in tile drainage and, and all that to make the property more viable for your farming operation, I think you have a green light 100%. So if, if somebody wanted to, just to build a new house or something like that right in the middle where there's a stream or environmental protected area, not a chance. They would not be able to. And they'd have to do a full-on phone book version of environmental impact study. And it'd be four seasons, you know, for nesting of the birds and all the rest of it. And if there was a single frog or, or anything else that was hopping across the property during one of those studies or those things, you would not get any development. But as far as agriculture goes, it's, you've got a green light for we need farming and they need to be able to expand their operations and, and do everything. And I've never seen a farmer yet do anything that's bad to the land, really.
Yeah. No, that, that was my assumption, but I just wasn't sure because they, there were so many constraints around the development end. I didn't know whether that also applied to the farming. I didn't think so, but I just want some clarification. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Any other questions from council at this time? Okay, seeing no hands, then I'm looking for a motion then to approve and then to forward this report to county planning. Motion by Counselor Archer, seconded by Counselor War, all in favor? And then that's carried. Thank you. Okay, the next one's almost a housekeeping one. We've ran into this one a few years back, I guess, five, six years ago. This has got to do, report for Ed Whitmore again, our chief building official, is consent agreement slash Gerben. So go ahead, Ed. Floor is yours again, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, it was five years ago when the Gerbens brought forward a consent application. It was B79-16 in the year 2016. They severed the main house off of the property and it was quite a large lot. And there was an accessory building off the severed portion that was still remained on there. And they would, you have to have the main building on prior to have an accessory building. So then they brought forward this agreement, allowing that, that accessory building to remain in place for a period of five years in order for the person to get all their issues or things in order so that they can build a retirement home. There's a clause in the agreement that they brought forward that was approved by council that said in five years' time, they may apply to have it extended for an additional five years. The original agreement was to be for 10 years and council just only agreed to the five years plus, plus the five-year clause. Because we really didn't want to go into a full 10-year agreement. So since there's been, different issues arise over the years and this COVID and other items have come up. And so the applicant and the owner of the property is not ready yet to do their retirement home. And so they would like to extend the agreement for the further five years as per the original agreement. So then you've got the, the letter to council from Mr. Gerben. You've got the existing consent agreement that's in place and then the proposed agreement. And the, pretty much the only difference in the proposed agreement is that we removed the clause 2.2 because that would let them extend it for another five years, like 15 years in total. And so you would think that 10 years is pretty good for either get rid of that accessory building and build your house or just to get rid of the accessory building and it's a vacant lot. Unless at that time, a, a new proposal is brought forward and the council of the day chooses to say, yes, we can do it again for another five years or so. This is what's before you today. And then there's a little map of the, as well, I did a little GIS map for you. And you just see that little concrete block building. I've inspected the building before and it's in really good shape. So it's not dilapidated. It's not an eyesore. I don't really have any issues with the property, with the building being there. If it was in real rough shape or, you know, it was falling down type of thing, I would recommend not to agree to not keep that building or extend it another five years. But right now I don't see any issues with it. And we never have had any complaints regarding this building neither, to my knowledge.
Hey, thanks, Ed. Any questions from council at this time on this? Pretty straightforward. Okay, seeing no hands, then I'm looking for a motion then to receive for information and then to authorize another five-year extension to the Gerben family. Okay, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Archer will second it, all in favor? And then that's carried. Thank you very much. And thank you very much, Ed, for today.
You're welcome. Bye now.
Thank you. All right, R6 then. And hopefully our CAO Candace White, her internet will be working. We've had some issues with hers and, and anyways, we'll try to get through this. So Candace, our CAO Clerk Treasurer, this is regarding the report Crowley Farms Norwood Preliminary Development Agreement, County of Peterborough, file number 15T-21004-22, Burke Street, Norwood. Basically in the middle of town. So go ahead, Candace, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I will keep this short and sweet just due to technical issues. Um, so the agreement in front of you is a standard agreement the council has seen before. It is part of any development process within the township. A preliminary development agreement ensures that the municipality secures funds or securities that we retain in order to cover the cost, municipality's costs of legal engineering or any other professional services that are required for development. And this preliminary development agreement is entered into by the municipality and the applicant. And then the securities are posted. We've attached what this agreement is, is for. It is for a We've attached what this agreement is for. It is for a four unit subdivision on Burt Street. You can see that there's going to be two units on the back of Maple Avenue East and then one unit to the east of the existing house. So there's actually three new builds, even though it's four units, there is one that's going to remain existing. This is the very early on in the process. So once the security is posted and the agreement has been executed with council's blessing. Then township staff will move forward with the peer review of all of the studies that the applicant has provided. Stormwater management, planning justification report and functional servicing. Once we move forward with that, then there'll be draft plan conditions that are drafted, et cetera. So it'll start the formal subdivision process under the guidance and direction of Peterborough County as all subdivisions are under their approval authority. I will take any questions from council.
Thanks for that, Candice. So discussion on 22 Burt Street. Council, any questions at this time? Deputy Mayor Burt, please.
Thank you through you, Mayor. Thanks, Candice. Actually, you had answered questions because some of them were next steps. And you just reviewed that with the peer review and the draft plan conditions and all of that. What's the average timeline for that? When will we be seeing this come back to council in a more another report?
The only the next thing that you'll see will be the subdivision agreement. That's really the only other thing that you'll see. You don't see functional servicing reports and stormwater management reports and all of those types of things. That's what the professionals and the engineers review on behalf of the township. So the next thing that council will see will be the subdivision agreement. Probably before the end of the year, I would suspect. It'll be late in the year, maybe beginning of next year. But it's not a very big development and it's in a service portion of the village. So, you know, review of those requirements, we could get through it even faster than that. It won't take much.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council? I have one question. I just wondered, Candice, I know the lot's back onto the little cul-de-sac in the back there. Is there any access coming off the cul-de-sac that we would know of at this time?
Excuse me, two driveways.
Two driveways. Okay, that sounds great. Fills in a little gap back there. All right, seeing no other hands for the questions, then I'm looking for a motion then to receive for information and then to authorize the clerk and myself, the mayor to enter into a preliminary development agreement for 22 Burt Street, Norwood. Okay, councillor War, seconded by deputy mayor Burt, all in favor. And that's Carrie. Okay, thank you very much. Candice, once again, your internet's holding out. R7 then would be regarding the Ontario Provincial Police Detachment Board restructuring.
Thank you, Mayor. So council has seen this a few times. I've just been trying to keep you guys up to speed as how this process is moving forward. So this is the formal adoption as to how we would like to see the new police services board restructured as through the provincial mandate under the Ontario Police Services Act. They're looking at, under Bill 68, redoing that act and part of it is reviewing the OPP detachment boards. As you know, the province would like to see one regional board for each detachment board, which would mean seven municipalities that are governed. Policing is governed under Peterborough County OPP as well as two First Nations communities, Curve Lake and Hiawatha, will also be represented on the board. So it has went to all police services board, as you can see in the report, two municipalities or two police services board, pardon me. Preferred to see two boards, but all other stakeholders wanted, supported one. So now that all the police services board have been consulted, it has now come back to the municipal councils because it is in your mandate to provide a resolution as to how you would like to see the police services board structured. We do have to submit one application for the entire Peterborough County OPP detachment area to the province by June 7. It is going to be submitted by the township of Selwyn. They, the staff there have volunteered to submit on behalf of everyone. And as part of that, we need to provide all of our resolutions that have been adopted by council. That being said, you also see their correspondence just to ask for an extension. I can, they've been pretty vocal that they're probably not going to give that, but we're gonna, all the municipalities are sending something in regardless. So it's there for council's consideration as well. So I'll take any questions.
Council, any questions on this? Pretty straightforward report. Okay, seeing no hands then, so.
Sorry, Roger.
Mayor Burt, please.
So obviously, we've, we've, we would like to see one board. There are some municipalities that want to see two.
No, there's two police services boards that want to see two. No municipal councils that have wanted to see two yet.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Okay, so disregard that question because I had some other questions in there on that, so that's fine. So I will make the motion to to move that and request for the extension as well.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Archer, all in favor. And then that's Carrie. Very good. Thanks. All right, R8 then Candice would be the management action list from council, please, while your internet's still holding up.
Yes, you can see what's coming forward to on May 25. As well as June 8, June 22. You're going to see there's going to be a pretty large public meeting as we've talked about the last couple of meetings. So you're well aware of that. The ATV bylaw I know has been asked about by council. Obviously, my priority list has shifted a little bit in the last week and a half. So it'll be coming back on the to do list, but I have spoke to Peterborough County OPP in regards to them doing a delegation in regards to ATV and off road vehicle enforcement and their preferred approach from an enforcement standpoint. Would council like to see a delegation from them? Or is consultation with them and their approach included in a staff report with the results of the survey adequate? Or do you want them to physically come to a council meeting and do a delegation? They asked that during the phone call this morning.
What's your thoughts, Candice? You figure we'll have lots of questions or you want to give questions ahead of time about the ATV? I mean, it is a pretty hot topic in our township, that's for sure. We have a lot that, yes, councillor Walsh, your thoughts and your muted, sir.
For you, Mayor. Yeah. Pretty pretty big topic in the community. I think it'd be nice to have them here just to be able to ask questions.
Deputy Mayor Burt?
Yeah, I agree. I think the more information we can get from from all sides helps. And certainly they're the ones out there that are seeing issues and non-issues perhaps. And I think it's important to get as much information as we can. You know, I, it would be nice to get it done as soon as possible, but there's an awful lot on our on our plates right now. So at everyone's convenience, I guess, is all we can do.
Yeah, and there's a lot on their plates right now with this OPP detachment reorganization. As well as Inspector Darling is on a temporary reassignment. So Chris Kelly has been filling in for her. So I think that's why they were asking if a written report to be included in the staff report would be sufficient. But I will let them know that a delegation is is preferred. They've also requested is that they that we ensure that the top, that the questions and the conversation remains on topic.
Yes.
All right, I will report back to them and I'm sure they would be more than willing. I'm just unsure of scheduling and when we'll be able to get that brought forward. But I will work with them on it and hopefully we can get something in place before July. Does council have any other questions in regards to the action list?
Deputy Mayor Burt, please.
Yeah, I just have one question. Just let me find it. Okay, so the June 8, we had the Trent River access points. I'm just wondering if that should be pushed back because it's looking like the lockdown is going to continue until the first part of June and I'm thinking that people aren't going to be out and about. And as much as we'd like to get this moving, I I'm just wondering how council feels about just pushing that back to maybe the the second meeting in June versus the June 8 and what your thoughts are as well, Candice.
Yeah, I think you're going to see it extended. There has been chatter about June 2. So June 8, I think we'll end up in the same position we were at our last meeting where we have no data to really make a decision on. So I think June 22 would be great and hopefully by then we have something because we don't have a meeting then until, you know, the fourth week of July. So hopefully we see something before then. But yeah, I'm fine with bumping that till the 22nd if that's okay with council.
Council, that sounds good. Yep, councillor Walsh, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I would just be supportive of what deputy mayor Burt has put out this, yeah. The chatter is June 2 is potentially the extension to current provincial lockdown and June 8, we really will be have minimal information to be able to make a really informative decision. So I think June 22 makes more sense.
Any other comments on that from council? Okay, anything else, Candice, you want to add to this?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, so R8 was the management action list. So motion to the report as discussed. Councillor Archer, seconded by councillor Walsh, all in favor. And that's Carrie. Thank you. And thanks, Candice, for those reports. So there are no correspondence for action at this time. Council lays on reports. Anyone have anything they'd like to say at this time? Councillor War, please.
Yes, thank you through you, Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge Jill Carty Designs. She was just nominated and won the Small Business Association for Decorating for Canada Wide, which is a real big boost for small businesses. And I just wanted to put that out there because so many small women entrepreneurs have been impacted by COVID-19. So I just wanted to throw that out that I'll send that link on to Melanie, maybe that can be further promoted in the community.
Sure, that might have been better under general business, but.
I'm sorry, I should, I wasn't sure which one, so.
That's okay. Yeah, anyone else have anything under the, okay, deputy mayor Burt, please.
Yeah, normally I get this out in the agenda and I just didn't get time, so I apologize, Melanie. And I can send you a printed report, just a review of the last county council meeting. We received the review of PECAD first quarter and just something to keep in mind, and I know we talked about this before. At the end of March, there were still over 600 jobs that employers are looking to hire. And 500 of those are full time in our area. So certainly there just seems to be a gap between the skills and what's available there. So they're looking at that. So it's that local job hub is the workforce development board. So if you know of anybody looking for work, you can certainly push that out there. Something else that was interesting, they had 11 business inquiries, five were lost just because there was no lands or applicable buildings. So it just shows the importance of, you know, that balance of employment lands and residential lands and agricultural lands. And and how do we, how do we balance that moving forward as we go through the official plan? And I think if I remember correctly, Roger, we're going to have a special meeting on that at some point. Don't know when. We got review of social services for 2020. And you may have read in the paper. Part of this service delivery review was the election of the warden and deputy warden and the changes there. Basically, it's two year term, two consecutive terms is the limit. And each of those people will be from different townships. So that was the main thing coming out of that report. And directly related to our township, we got the quarterly recycling report on the number of calls that both the county and Amterra receives through the months of January, February and March. They had 271 calls in total. Of those, about 126 were complaints. Many of those were the the recycling was missed. It could have been it was out later or whatever. But just so you know, we're 15 total calls in Massey, Norwood. The township may receive more than maybe afforded on and maybe they don't end up calling the township or Amterra. But anyway, 15, 15 calls over three months. So hopefully, things are settling down as far as it comes to the recycling end of things. The county is looking at parking and by law enforcement actions. There's a number, there's, there's a couple of different systems they're looking at. So we'll hear more about that coming up. And then both, well, Roger and I and Barry sat in on it, that special Eeyorn meeting with both the gig project and the Selgat project review. That was Thursday night. And I'll just bring something up under general business regarding that. So that's everything.
Okay, thanks, Deputy Mayor. Anyone else have anything? Okay, seeing no hands then, we'd be on to the CAO clerks treasures list. Candice, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of quick updates for council and I'm sure you're aware, but Alma Street and Victoria Street intersection, that entrance to both those streets were closed yesterday. That is going to be an ongoing closure for approximately two weeks. As of right now, you can access Victoria from Highway 7 and of course Alma Street from the more easterly points. But just that County Road 45 entrance to both of those streets have been blocked off for the sanitary main installation project. All the businesses have been spoken to and the contractor and the township is working with smooth transitions as that project moves forward. The town hall ramp replacement project has started. They're working diligently away at that. No issues to report. The live exterior library project for the Norwood branch. We've had to get some soil samples and a survey. So May 18, we're getting some soil samples completed. And then we've reached out to survey. So that laneway that goes between the home hardware building and the municipal library building. We are surveying that area to ensure that the Norwood courtyard project remains on municipal property. Just standardizing that municipality ensures that everything's surveyed before we move forward. So those things are happening in advance. So hopefully, we start to see some actual construction there in June, hopefully. Obviously, COVID has had an impact on that project as well. As far as getting quotes and contractors in there in order to perform the work has been a bit of a challenge, but we're trying to keep it local if possible. Centerline Road project has started. No issues to report to council. Pretty early on, we're about a week in. But we'll keep council apprised as as the project moves forward. Probably next month, we'll we'll do a report to council as as the status, once it's been kind of a month in progress and we actually have something to report. We'll bring something forward to council, but there's nothing to report as of this time. It's moving along quite smoothly. The Westwood Bridge replacement is still scheduled to commence in July. Obviously, they had its time of year specific for bridge work, so they have to wait till July before that can commence. And so it is still slated. There has been some residents asking because they knew it was happening in 2021 and all the other construction in the township has commenced, but it has not. It is going to commence. It's just later in the summer before you're going to see that if you do get questioned by anyone. I've talked about the ATV bylaw. Strategic plan will recommence in the month of June. Month of May has been dedicated to to other items. So you, I'm not going to restart that until the month of June. The community center project, I am working on assigning and appointing a project manager for that for the design. We'll be putting out an RFP for the design build, but working on a project manager for that project right now. Hopefully have something in place over the course of the next month so that we are slated to have design. The tender procurement process done, design done and any public consultation and stakeholder consultation. If we're going to go down that road in 2021 for construction, hopefully to commence in 2022. So that's exciting as well. The transfer station bridge has become a higher priority and no council remembers or not. But the last OSIM report for that bridge stated that it needed to be replaced within one year. And so there's going to be potentially the emergency provision of our procurement bylaw used in order to get a bridge in place over top of the existing bridge and have to take a staged approach. a bridge in place over top of the existing bridge and have to take a staged approach for health and safety reasons there, so you're gonna see very quick movement on that transfer station bridge over the course of the next thirty to sixty days. Recruitment-wise, you're gonna see us adding to the team, as council's aware, so you're gonna see, we're going out to more recruitment, building, planning assistant, as well as a Parks and Recreation lead hand. Those two ads for recruitment will be going out, hopefully, within the next week or so, so between those and the Public Works Manager. There's going to be, definitely be adding to our team, which is exciting, and I think that's it, Mayor. I'll take any questions if council has any.
Thank you, Candace. Your internet only blipped about twice, but we caught everything that you said, so that's good. Any questions on her, on the list there from council? Counselor Walsh, please.
Yeah, Candace, or through you, Roger. Candace, on the station Trent, or the transfer station bridge, so I think our original plan was we were gonna have a bridge that would replace the current bridge, but you're saying that we need to move faster and do it as a staged approach, putting something in like immediately? And are we still gonna move to what the original plan was on the bridge?
Yeah, so you're, as of right now, it's, we're going, we've got locates, and we're gonna dig some test pits up there. We need to see how high the bedrock is on the transfer station road to determine how deep the girders of the bridge have to be, and then of course hydrogeological for the Conservation Authority, because they have to give us a permit in order to do it, so we're looking at procuring and getting the replacement bridge, but placing it over top of the existing bridge temporarily to deal with the health and safety component, then, because the permitting process through the Conservation Authority, hydrogeological studies, and all of that is going to take time to get that in place. Once the permits are all in place, we'll lift the bridge off, be able to do all the abutments at the proper length, and then put the bridge permanently in place, so it's essentially, I'm just letting you know that things are moving relatively quicker, and we will be using the emergency provision of the procurement policy in order to obtain that bridge, to get it in place, because its condition is deteriorating quite rapidly.
Yeah, and we have it in the budget anyway, so it isn't like it's an unplanned expense.
No, it's, it's in the budget, we just have.
That's what I mean, it was in the budget, so it's not an unplanned expense anyway, so.
No, it's not unplanned. We just, as you know, we budget, and we just hope when we go out and actually start putting all the costs together, that it's within that budget amount, give or take a little bit, so. Regardless, we will be keeping council apprised.
Cool.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing no questions then, we'll move on then to General Business then, please. Laurie, Deputy Mayor Burt, you had something you wanted to add?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things. And I'm not, not that anybody needs any extra work or extra reading, but I, I did have a book on my shelf that I just picked up a bit ago, and it's called Thirteen Ways to Kill a Community, and the author's Doug Griffiths. And I think from a standpoint of any councillor or municipal staff, it's a, it's a great read. Basically, you know, you can kill your community by not engaging youth, and not having good water, it's just, it's just a fairly light read, but it's a good reminder of why we're in the business we're in, so if anybody's looking for some light, or maybe not so light reading, I, I just thought I'd throw that out there to everyone, and then the second thing was regarding the, the meeting with Eeyorn. I know it's requested that we support the Eeyorn proposal, and if we would like to send letters on to our local MP and MPP, we could either do that as individuals or as a council, so I'm just throwing that out there as to what you would like to do, whether we do that individually, or a letter from council, whatever you would think would be effective.
Yeah, thanks. I think I was at a convention one time when that author was actually there for that Thirteen Ways to Kill Your Community, and it was really enlightening, and, and one of the ones that hit me was, on that topic was because competition makes you hone your, your trade and, and make you do a better job to a certain extent, so. Thanks for bringing that forward. So Deputy Mayor Burt had a counsel about Eeyorn, what was the thoughts on something like that? We'd have to have Candace back online just to help critique us with something, but it is an important to, to get internet to everyone, and then the, the one gig thing was to have internet cable to everyone's house in at least ninety-five percent of the area to rural homes, as well as rural villages, and one thing after another, so. I believe I've signed something already through county council that got, had to be sent out, but what's councillor's thoughts on something like that? Counselor Walsh?
Through you, Mayor. I guess question back to you and Deputy Mayor Burt is, what do you think would carry the most weight for us, a letter individually? And a letter from, or one or the other? I think we want to support this project. It's, it's pretty amazing what, you know, Rogers have came on board, they're gonna help with the the cellphone gap, which is great, and then the, the internet expansion, we certainly need as well, so I'm open to doing whatever everybody else thinks, but I just wonder what would carry the most, feeling what would carry the most weight.
Right, Candace, you wanted to add into that at all?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I just keep turning my video off because my internet stabilizes once my video's off, but yes, I would think probably a motion, a motion of council that's approved by council as a collective unit will always carry more weight, and I don't believe if you send one all individually, plus one from a group of council, that it's gonna carry more weight. I think it would be the same. I think the goal would be to get as many municipalities as possible is the goal versus a bunch of letters from the same municipality. So hopefully, all of the other municipalities are doing the same thing. The Thirteen Ways to Kill Your Community, that came out during the previous term of council, and there was quite a bit of discussion on it, and they had quite a few meetings, actually it was at every economic development meeting I think we went to for the course of a year and a half, so it is, it is a really good read. I've read it probably a couple of times now, just by referring to different sections in it throughout meetings and, and conferences, so everyone should pick up a copy of it. It is a really, really good read, so I'm glad Deputy Mayor, it's still out and about, obviously, it's still making its mark after all these years, so that's a good thing. But we can, if council wants to make the motion, Eeyorn, we can get some correspondence. I, I think probably the county has a standard letter they want us all to use with verbiage, and we can get a council motion added to it and get it sent on relatively quickly.
Okay, who wants to make that motion then? Deputy Mayor Burt?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to send a letter to Eeyorn on behalf of the gig project, or to Eeyorn on behalf of council.
Okay, seconded by Counselor War. All in favor? Carried. Pardon for us in the future, though, is when actually Rogers gets procurement of leased land, and that's how they normally do it, is they use leased land in order to construct a tower. We have our building and bylaws basically that, that they need to pass through and one thing after another to make sure that the site is, is proper and one thing after another, but that, what will happen to us, like it did down near Rice Lake, is that there will be arguments from certain neighbors possibly that will not want a tower near their backyard and one thing after another, so that's something as a council, we're gonna have to make our way through, and we'll have to wade into it hip-deep, I'm sure. But it is important for all of us, and especially for the children in our areas that are struggling with school and internet. It's hard enough to keep them engaged as, as it is now, never mind having the internet blip in and out on them, so. So we have, we have a motion, and it was seconded, and I believe I had an all-in favor there, so I guess that's the end of that discussion then, so. Is there anything else under General Business then that council would like to discuss? Counselor Walsh, please.
Through you, Mayor. Candace, do we have any sense on the Business Community Awards? I know the response deadline is May thirty-first, but have we had some, some early entries in?
Yes, we've had early entries in. We've, I think we got our first entry the day after we launched. So yes, we're getting entries in, and we'll bring a report to council, probably the first meeting in June to tell you guys all about kind of where we landed and that sort of thing, so spread the word, make sure everyone is, you know, taking a look at that and taking a look at the categories, and hopefully we're able to turn this into something special for the township.
To you.
Counselor War, please.
Yes, through you, Mayor. Just the discussion that we just had about thirteen ways to kill a community. He is speaking via Zoom on June twenty-fourth for rural communities, Community Futures of Peterborough. So if anyone is interested in hearing him speak, Doug Griffiths, then that's where you can catch up.
Thanks for that. Good, good job. Okay, anything else under General Business, council? All right, seeing no hands then, there's no closed session. There's no notice of motion. I just, I'll ask the clerk, you're, you're blipping in and out, would you like me to read the bylaws today? Or do you want to give it a shot?
I can read them, I'll keep my video off.
Okay, then go ahead, clerk, the bylaws, please.
Being a bylaw to authorize execution of a preliminary development agreement between Crowley Farms Norwood Limited and the Corporation of the Township of Asfodale Norwood writ a first, second, and third time in numbered bylaw twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four.
Motion by, please. Counselor Walsh, Counselor Archer seconded, all in favor? And that's Carrie.
Being a bylaw to authorize execution of a consent agreement between Glenn Frederick Irvin and the Corporation of the Township of Asfodale Norwood be read a first, second, and third time in numbered bylaw twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five.
Thank you. Motion by Counselor Archer, seconded by Counselor War, all in favor? And that's Carrie. In the confirming bylaw, please.
Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the regular meeting of the council of the Township of Asfodale Norwood held on May eleventh, twenty twenty-one, be read a first, second, and third time in numbered bylaw twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six.
Motion by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Deputy Mayor Burt, all in favor? And then that's Carrie. Thank you. You have your future meeting scheduled before you, and I'll ask for a motion then to adjourn, and the time would be two eleven. Motioned by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Archer, all in favor? And then that's Carrie. Thank you. And thank you, council, thank you, staff. And we're sorry for those that may have wanted to join us through YouTube, we had technical difficulties, so unfortunately, there's a recording that'll be downloaded or uploaded now. And anyways, have a good afternoon, everyone, and be safe, please.
You too.